Twenty-five and at six P. M., we do have a forum of council president. So our first thing will be the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, citizens of the United States of America, and to the people of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's uh, this remains standing. We're going to have a moment of silence. Not a councilman Mike Paul for the passing.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to come together tonight as citizens of Chester County. As I look out in the audience and I see the men and women that have fought and defended our country and Memorial Day is soon going to be upon us, let's do not forget the sacrifices that they made for our country and for our freedom to give us the right to assemble and give us the right to be able to have a conversation about the things that we did. Please remember Mr. Ball and his family. Mr. Ball was a very fine man, contributed tremendously to the town of Great Falls in that area. I'm going to miss him. And Lord, please, please, let our country come together and be able to have a conversation about all the different things that go on in this country, how great it is. Thank you very much. I'm God, Lord pray amen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if there's no objections, I was going to just open up the floor real briefly and see if there are any comments from council in regards with the passing of Mr. Ball.
Um, I'd just like to say that if anybody knows Mike Ball, you know he loved Great Falls, but he loved this county also. He loved serving on this council. And I appreciate all of his input and wisdom throughout my short time here. And Chester County has lost a great person and um and he'll be missed very much. Thank you.
Anything else? I would just like to say, you know, at my time here, I've really got to know Mike and became a friend. And he's a good friend. I just friend is someone that, you know, would check on you and care about you and always ask about your family. And his contributions here on council were, were big. He was a, he was a behind the scenes kind of guy at times. He did a lot of things. Probably didn't get the credit he deserved for. You know, maybe that he was putting in the work and getting it done. Just really appreciate the example he led for all of us. We really are going to miss him. So just wanted to take just a moment to, to really, you know, just give us just a moment just to think about it and certainly his family in our prayers tonight. So the next item on the agenda is, our next item on the agenda is a special recognition that we do have and excited to have this from the Great Falls High School class. So really, really want to welcome this, Kinsley Price and her family there. And way, way for the audience. In a minute, we're going to take a picture, but let me, I've got something to read and then we're going to all stand up and take a picture with her, so with her. And here we go. So it's, it's my honor to recognize a truly outstanding member of the Great Falls High School class of twenty twenty-five and the winner, winner of South Carolina Association of Counties twenty twenty-five Board of Directors Scholarship for Chester County. The Association of Counties is the only statewide organization representing county government in South Carolina. The scholarship program was established in nineteen ninety-eight to recognize exceptional students who plan to further their education in an in-state two-year or four-year college or university. Each year, the Association of Counties awards one-time five thousand dollar scholarships to graduating high school seniors who are residents of chosen counties. Chester County was among those chosen for the twenty twenty-five rotation. During her time at Great Falls High School, this year's scholarship recipient served as captain of volleyball team, cross-country team, and marksmanship team, as well as drill team commander. She was also vice president of the school's chapter of the National Beta Club. She serves her community by volunteering with organizations like the Lord's Lunchbox and Gras, which help feed people experiencing food insecurity. She also volunteers with the Great Falls River Home and the Hometown Association to highlight Great Falls and encourage others to visit. She'll continue to share her love of learning with others as she attends Anderson University in the fall to pursue a degree in early childhood education with the goal of becoming a kindergarten teacher. It is my pleasure to announce the recipient of the South Carolina Association of Counties twenty twenty-five Board of Directors Scholarship, Chester County, Kinsley Price. Kinsley, you are an incredible young woman and Chester County Council and the South Carolina Association of Counties wishes you continued success and a very bright future. One more second. All right. So thank you all for that. That was really special. Couldn't help but thank about Councilman Ball. That was, that was our largest generation right here with us and being our, what a great thing. So next we have citizen comments. We have four people signed up to speak. And the first person on the list is Mr. Lindsey Cameron.
Chairman Wilson, sorry.
What I do?
We need to approve the minutes first.
Sure do. Thank you very much. All right. Got to have myself there. So we're going to back up. So number four is the approval of minutes. So we have the May fifth, twenty twenty-five county council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the May twenty, May fifth, two thousand twenty-five minutes from the Chester County Council.
I'll take it.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll call for the question. There's a favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. So now it's time for citizen comments. Lindsey Cameron, you're first on the list. I imagine you have, you'll come forward, state your name, your address, and then after you do that, you have three minutes to speak.
My name's Lindsey Cameron, Jr. They called me Butch. I'm from twenty-four, twenty-nine West Chester School Road, and I appreciate all y'all's time. One I'm talking about is the old castle store out there. It's been put up, it's been took over since nineteen ninety-five, when the first, when the castles got rid of it. And the people out there, I love them to death. They all got character and the whole place out there. And people are great. And this, this guy, Obish, I can't pronounce his name, y'all, I forgive me. That'd be a, he's a hardworking person and I've seen him help people in the store out there. Don't have nothing. And they cook food and all that, he helps them, they don't say orders. He helps, he helps a lot of folks that's out there and all that. I support him one hundred percent because I've been in that, out there in the county that end of it all my life. I see where the change is, he changed it from trying to change it to a commercial district to from regular district. He got his license, that's what I didn't understand, T B C license. Passed him and he opened up a week, then it shut him down. I still don't understand him. Once you get past realizing all, I think you should be there, be able to work. He's a hardworking guy. Thank you very much and go have a good day.
Thank you. All right. Next we have Richard Worthy. Mr. Richard Worthy, come forward, state your name and address, and then after you do that, you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Richard Worthy. I live at sixteen forty-two Laura Lane, Chester, South Carolina. I've been living there for all my life. Before Albie took over the store, Bobby Castle owned it, then it was sold to Grant, and now he own it. I've been going out there, well, since he bought it, before he bought it, I was going down there visiting, and he trying to make a good job to live in. I don't see why he should be penalized or maybe be denied for what he trying to do. Because he could be a help to the good community, which he is a good hard worker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So next we have Mr. Barbara Cameron.
Thank you. My name's Barbara Cameron. I live at twenty-four, twenty-nine West Chester School Road in Chester. I'm a retiree of the Chester County Sheriff's Office, and I'm here today to talk about Albie and his store. I know some of the concerns has been about parking. You and I both know this is a package store. This is where someone goes in and purchases it and leaves. It would be different if it was a bar with people hanging around, around the neighborhood or something like that, but this is where you go in and just make a purchase and leave. He has plenty of parking there. If not, he has parking across the store. He's very nice to people. He's, he's a pillar of the community since he has been out there helping people, so nice to each person that comes in. It's a convenient for West Chester for us not to have to come all the way to town to get things, gas, little bit of groceries, yeah, a little bit of a restaurant. And now to the ones who want to enjoy a drink, they'll have the opportunity of stopping and getting it and taking it home themselves. So I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate it if you'd help him complete his business. Thank you.
All right. So next we have Ms. Susan Castles. State your name and address and then you have three minutes.
My name is Susan Castles. I live at six forty-nine New Mary Choice Drive in Prosperity. I want to talk about, excuse me, as we say, the castle store, and the castle store is not the issue here. The issue is the property on the other side of the road, which was owned by my other grandfather, Mr. Oats. And we closed it in nineteen seventy-four, my grandmother did, because my aunt was killed in a car accident, and it has been used as a supply of a storage building since then because that we had nobody to run it, and it hasn't been kept up. My concern and my family's concern is the fact that it is between two homes. One of those homes I came home in when I was a baby. And we do not think there's anybody in this room that wants to be in the middle of a liquor store, whether you consume liquor there or not, because of the safety aspect, and you don't know the condition of the person when they come there and when they leave. We already discussed that. My concern too is when I appeared before the planning committee, I have yet to be able to read the minutes from that planning committee, because there was information presented there that did not, was not as accurate as it may needed to have been. The other concern is this non-conforming status that you're voting on. The, the area was R two residential, and it has been turned into a, a status without getting permission to do it, and nobody has gone and examined it at this point. I understand you've got to make a decision on it, but it's almost like if you want to do something, you do it in Chester County and then you get permission. We are not happy with it because the conditions are not as good as they need to be, and we are concerned that maybe they may be left that way, even when you, if you vote to do this. So that is a real concern for us. We still visit there. We, my brother has considered moving there, and there's things about this that it's not exactly where you would want to raise your family, small children with cars coming and going beside this liquor store. There's issues there that are not a community issue. As far as the castle's grocery and how it is run, it's excellent, but that's not the issue tonight. The issue is the building across the street, the safety aspect, and being able to not be concerned about the people that live in the houses. Thank you for letting me come tonight, and I once again ask you to come out and look at the location. I think that speaks more than anything we can speak here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our next item on the agenda is number six, a public hearing. We don't have one for tonight, so that brings us to number seven. Ordinances, resolutions, and proclamations. First one on the list is to honor National EMS Week. Again, we have a lot of special guests and audience tonight. So that's great. So here we go. So it says, "A proclamation in honor of Emergency Medical Services EMS Week. Whereas, emergency medical services EMS is a vital public service delivering lifesaving care to individuals in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, timely access to high-quality emergency medical care significantly enhances the chances of survival and recovery for those experiencing sudden illness or injury. Whereas, EMS professionals play an essential role in bridging gaps in the healthcare system by providing vital out-of-hospital care, including preventative services, follow-up treatment, and access to telemedicine. Whereas, EMS system is comprised of a dedicated network of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital and emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other providers of out-of-hospital medical care. Whereas, members of EMS teams, whether career or volunteer, devote countless hours to specialized training and ongoing education to refine and enhance their lifesaving abilities. Whereas, it is fitting to honor and recognize the dedication, commitment, and contributions of emergency medical service personnel by designating a week in their honor. Now therefore, I, Pete Wilson, chairman on behalf of the Chester County Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week, in appreciation of all EMS professionals who serve our community with courage, compassion, and excellence in the pursuit of saving lives and helping others in the community, done on this day, nineteenth day of May." Thank you each one of you for being here tonight, today, and we, we are going to come get a picture too and present it now.
I'll say one thing. That lady with the glasses off back there saved my life. I tried not to go without saying thank you. I got to see my grandkids born, I got to see them play baseball, I got to see them smile. Thank you, Ms. James, I appreciate it.
Mr. Kinsley, do you have a few words too, don't you?
Yes, I do. Council, thank you for
Come on to the microphone so folks can hear you at home.
Absolutely. Okay. This year's theme is we care for everyone, and our paramedics, EMTs, and our staff does that every day, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. It doesn't matter, raised creed, colored, rich, poor, homeless, down and out, they're there for you, give the highest quality care every day that you need it. So we're blessed to have eleven personnel on each shift. Overall, we have sixty personnel that serve this county, and I couldn't be more proud to be a part of EMS, and thank you to council for the support to make our EMS system what it is. So I want to give a hand and thank you to our EMS crew that are here today. So thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you, thank you for your, for your service. We had a, we had a bad incident out in Larry's last night, and we're hard at work. Thank you for what you do. Next is on our agenda, seven B, proclamation in honor of Memorial Day. More special guest in the audience, so thank y'all for being here as well. A proclamation in honor of Memorial Day and our fallen heroes. Whereas, Memorial Day stands as a solemn reminder of the courage, dedication, and ultimate sacrifice made by the men and women of the United States Armed Forces who gave their lives and service to our nation. Whereas, these brave individuals answered the call to defend the freedoms and values upon which our country was founded, often in distant lands and under the most challenging circumstances. Whereas, the legacy of our fallen heroes endures in the liberties we cherish, the security we enjoy, and the enduring strength of our democratic institutions. Whereas, we honor not only the lives lost, but also the families and loved ones who bear the profound grief of their absence and whose sacrifice is inseparable from, from that of their departed heroes. Whereas, Memorial Day is a time for communities across the nation to unite in remembrance, reflection, and gratitude, and to reaffirm our commitment to upholding the values for which these soldiers fought and died. Now therefore, I, Pete Wilson, chairman on behalf of Chester County Council, do hereby proclaim Monday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, as Memorial Day, in solemn remembrance of the fallen soldiers of the United States Armed Forces. We call upon all residents of Chester County to honor their memory, reflect on their sacrifice, and express our deepest gratitude for their unwavering service to our country. It's just done on the nineteenth day of May. We, we certainly appreciate what, what, all that was done for, to keep our country safe, and all that was given in that effort. We want to take a picture, just like we've done before, and I want to thank y'all for being here and for all the work that y'all do in promoting the memories and the importance of our fallen heroes.
Relax, my hand.
Yeah.
All right. So next on our agenda, we have item seven C, which is a first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing pursuant to Title Twelve, Chapter Forty-four of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad lura taxes agreement between Chester County and Chester PV One LLC. Acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project companies collectively company providing for a fee in lieu of ad lura tax incentives, modifying a joint county industrial and business park of Chester and North Counties, so as to enlarge the park provision of special source revenue credits and other related matters.
Good evening, chairman, members of council. Bearing in mind that whoever set up this agenda scheduled at heroes, heroes lawyers, I will endeavor to be brief and, and take items C and D together for expediency. So we have on the agenda this evening, a solar project fee in lieu of tax, broad parameters of which are that we have a thirty-nine million, one hundred and forty thousand dollar investment over a period of five years with a forty-year repayment. We have both the first reading of the ordinance as item C and the inducement resolution as item D. Will be three hearings for the ordinance and then a public, public hearing on June twenty-third. The solar project is a thirty-nine point six megawatts hour equivalent with a sixty-five hundred dollar per megawatt equivalent investment, so that is a payment from the company of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars per year. The project also includes a site mitigation plan, site as in lineup site, which has been proposed to the administrator and has been reviewed and will be incorporated in the agreement. And And also includes a decommissioning bond, which is a hundred and fifty percent or one and a half times the net decommissioning cost, which is the cost to decommission it less the scrap value of the leftover materials. Are there any questions?
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
Make the motion to approve first reading of the ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five dash twelve.
I'll second.
All right. Call for a question. There's a favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. All right. So related to this is item seven D, which is Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eleven, providing preliminary approval for certain incentives to reduce a company identified as Chester PV One LLC, acting for itself from one or more current or future affiliates and other project sponsors collectively the company, to establish or expand certain facilities in Chester County, South Carolina, County, including negotiated fee in lieu of ad lorem tax arrangements. And number two, multi-county industrial or business park arrangements, and three other related matters. Any comments on this one?
None on this one, Chair.
All right. Thanks. Is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? If you have none, I'll call for a question. There's a favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. All in favor. All right. That brings us to number eight, administrative report, Mr. Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I'd just like to, um, going back to the passing of Councilman Vaughn, um, I would like to publicly announce his memorial service will be held June the seventh, um, at two P M. at Great Fathers Presbyterian Church. The family will greet visitors after the service and then there'll be a private burial service that will take place as well. And so, I know that the family, uh, appreciates all the condolences and all the people that have reached out, um, and all of, uh, the county staff that have reached out to the family as well as Mr. Vaughn before his passing. So, um, a lot was said, he will be greatly missed. And then the last, the last thing I have tonight is Memorial Day, May the twenty-sixth, we just, um, get a proclamation in honor of, county offices will be closed. However, I'm sure everybody will be happy to hear that the recycle centers will be open and the landfill will be open that day. So that makes everyone happy. Um, and with that, I conclude my administrative's report tonight.
So that brings us to item nine A, under consent. Uh, we have the, uh, number nine is a consent agenda. We have two items. A is the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven. And B is the second reading of C C M A twenty-five dash seventeen. Is there a motion on the floor?
Make the motion, we approve both items from consent.
All right. We've got a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? Call for a question. There's a favor, please raise your hand and say aye. All in favor. Next is number ten, old business. Number ten A is the second reading of C C M A twenty-five dash sixteen. Abi, Abi Shig, Devgon, request a portion, one seven, seven and five acres of tax map number zero-one-nine, zero-zero, zero-zero, zero-one-one, dash, zero-zero-zero, located on three-two-eight-three Pinkney Road, Chester, South Carolina, two-nine-seven-oh-six, to be rezoned from rural two district, R-two, to general commercial district, G-C. The planning commission voted three to one to approve.
I want to make that motion, we second reading of C C M A twenty-five dash sixteen. And uphold the planning commission. Approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve, uh, the second reading. Any discussion?
And this is in relation to Ikea?
This, this is the, um, the store that's being proposed, um, out in Westchester. Have the citizen comments. That's, that's this one.
It's about the million right there, right?
It's great.
Got you.
I'd like to point out that, you know, the gentleman, I think, ought to have implied consent based on business across the street, but there will be a lot of things he's gonna have to do pursuant to our codes already, if this is approved. And I think that will address a lot of the issues that have been spoken of tonight, as far as parking, lighting, things of that nature. Those codes are fairly encompassing of bringing things up to a standard to make it acceptable to run a business like this.
Turning the board, discussion? All right. So I'll call for a question. There's a favor of the second reading of C C M A twenty-five dash sixteen. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. All in favor. Next we have number eleven, which is new business. Eleven A is the approval of tree removal at the Gateway Conference Center. Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If you guys will, uh, on the screens in front of you, I have a few pictures for you to look at, but Gateway Steering Committee had come to us a while back. We, it was actually kind of a, a cooperative effort, but, uh, they have a project to remove the trees, many which are, are, a few of which are dead. There's some old stumps and, uh, things in front of the gateway. And as you see to the north side, which would be the bottom of your screen that you're looking at, then a big group of trees there that, um, kind of blocked the view of people that are coming north, uh, or coming south, uh, as they approach the gateway, uh, and it blocks the view there. And so, uh, for numerous reasons, to provide better safety and visibility, uh, to that area, they have proposed a project that'll take away, um, all of their tree, all of those trees that you see marked there, uh, with a blue dot on your screen. There are funds that they have available that have been earmarked, um, by the delegation to cover the cost. And we have a letter from the delegation giving their approval for the use of those funds for this project as well. So it will not cost the county, uh, any money. Being that this is own county property and this is a county facility, uh, I thought, and, and as well as the Gateway Steering Committee, we all felt appropriate for council to be able to weigh in on this as we would be removing these trees. Um, D O T. has already given their approval, uh, for the project. Our project manager, as well as our building official, have been involved from the get-go, as well as many members of the Gateway Steering Committee. And then, once the trees are removed, there's two different prices, uh, some for, uh, that area that you see to the south. And then, can we go to the second picture as well? And if you look at that, the retention pond's actually overgrown with pine trees, um, just hasn't been maintained that well. And so, all that will be taken out, opening up the view, uh, as well as fix, kind of fixing the issues that we have with the retention pond there on the, uh, north end. I want to call it the south embassy, the north end. And then what we'll do is, once these trees are removed and they'll be, the stumps will be ground down, the mulch will be removed, and then we'll go back in with dirt and grass seed and, uh, make that look pretty. And then, uh, and there are, there are some trees up front that are standing there, but then we'll review, uh, maybe the landscape plan to, uh, enhance that area as well. But the goal is to really beautify and bring, bring, um, this resource that we have in our community, allow people to see it as they come down. You know, we have, I can't remember the number of cars that pass there every day, but it was staggering.
That's why them X is at, you gonna remove all them too?
Yes, sir.
Is there any trees in there we can get some money for, you know, like the pines and stuff? You might want to sell it to?
I think they looked, and I don't think there was enough or that they were the right size, uh, in there, so, um, but I don't, I don't, I know the ones in the retention pond are all too small.
I got it. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
They're looking for action.
Yes, sir. So what I would like is just council's approval, uh, that, uh, for us to move forward with this project.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the tree removal at Gateway.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve this tree removal at the Gateway Conference Center as described by Mr. Hester. Hold him in a second. Is there any discussion? Call for a question. There's a favor, please raise your hand and say aye. All in favor. Next is eleven B, which is approval of a five-year contract to Toshiba Business Solutions, cover IT directed, that's Director David Swobki.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. Um, I'm here seeking approval for a contract for a cost-per-copy print services with Toshiba Business Solutions. Uh, this contract will cover all county offices. The estimated cost, based off calculations from the previous year's volumes, would be roughly fifty-three thousand annually. Um, this is an estimated savings of about sixty thousand from the previous year's lease model. Um, the equipment provided by Toshiba will be new, but we will also utilize some of our pre-existing equipment that was purchased, um, and owned by the county from previous years. Um, this contract includes the service on all machines as well as the torn or replacement. Need questions related to this?
Lot of savings. And I notice that this is a lot, this is the first time you've redone the, the printing contract.
Or you did this a few years ago too. Uh, we redid it, but we did it a little differently and saved that time, but then I met with a few other counties and found this cost-per-copy model and it made a lot more sense for the county.
Remember last time, there was some savings. So this is on top of those savings?
Yes, sir.
It's the same people.
I know, we're, we're going with a different vendor this time.
Okay.
Uh, this vendor's in Lancaster, Chester, and York County School District, as well as York Government, so.
I got it.
This is wasting the equipment, upkeep, maintenance.
Yeah, they, uh, they own all the equipment. We were basically renting it, yes. We don't own it after five years.
The maintenance, there are repairs and things.
Correct, yeah.
Any motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, we approve the five-year contract.
Second.
Motion to approve this five-year contract to Toshiba Business Solutions in a second. Is there any discussion? Those are favorite, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So we don't have any boards or commissions tonight. That brings us to, um, number thirteen, which is executive session. We have three items on executive session. They are, A is a discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body. That's for Project P twenty-four eighty-five. B is the same for Project P twenty-five zero-seven. And C is receipt of legal advice regarding a capital project sales tax commission and referendum. Any motion to go into, into executive session?
Make the motion, we move to executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.